Let's call the October 16th meeting to order. All board members are present. If you'll please join us for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do any board members have agenda items, modifications of the agenda? My report is fairly brief tonight. Just a reminder that the third Springfield Public Schools Hall of Fame luncheon will be on Thursday. We have three phenomenal inductees for the Hall of Fame. Two of them will be with us. And we should have a big crowd. And I hope that, I know all the board members will be there. And I hope everybody else in the audience can join us too. Dr. Ritter, your report.
I just want to make a mention that the Tzukagi recognition that we're going to have as far as the alumni, that's going to be a very powerful presentation by his son. The video is second to none, so I encourage you to pay attention to that. The thing I want to mention to the board at this time, we have the official enrollment. You should have that onboard docs and/or at your place as far as enrollment we received as of yesterday. But on top of that, I just want to give you some statistical information related to Springfield metropolitan area. That from 2000 to 2010, the metropolitan area, Springfield grew from 368,000 to 374,000. Does everybody have it?
Yes.
That's this document right here. Is that your place? We had enrollment, I mean enrollment, we had a population of 368,000, 374 in 2000. We're at 436,712 in 2010, which is about, well, 18.6 percent increase. It's very nice growth. And then the second page that you have in front of you is really the September enrollment history, starting in 2003, 2004 to the present time. And you could see the fluctuation in how this last year we see a nice growth from 24,352 to 24,876. The next page gives you the September enrollments from 2003 to 2004 by building. And you can look at the changes in enrollment there. And we'll have a little bit of a conversation regarding that in our retreat. And then, and you can see that both for elementary, middle, and high school as well. Then the last page gives you, by the way, the total enrollment, I believe, is 534, is it? I think it is, is our total enrollment increase from last year. The last page is the enrollment by race and ethnicity. And for your information, the, we have a change, our enrollment, the ethnicity as far as the white population is down 1 percent. The Asian population is up a little bit, as well as the multi-race from a year ago. I did not indicate that on here. I apologize for that. The black population is staying the same. And the Hispanic Latino population is staying about the same from a year ago. So I wanted to share that information with you tonight. Any questions or?
Ms. Callen.
Just to clarify though, this is just K through 12, right? This does not include any enrollment that we have in preschool, in preschool, early childhood classes?
No, not at all. This is really comparing apples to apples. And it's K through 12 coming from official numbers from DESI.
I think the other thing that I'd like to ask, even though it's not numbers that we have to track, because it does impact our facility, these numbers impact our facilities. But could we see the same data for pre-K at some point?
Sure, if we could do that. And in fact, we could have that for you by Thursday at our board retreat if it's okay.
Might be helpful.
Okay, we'll have that for you as well.
And then maybe, maybe that superimposed to like the total number that we're serving? Because I think that that's the number that we'll see is really gone up significantly, so.
Okay. Another thing, I met with the Kids First Initiative today, this afternoon. Had a great conversation about school readiness. And really, our students were really well-prepared because I think in a lot of ways, the community's response, we feel we're going to need to organize that response as far as supplies and other clothing and food as far as students being ready to come to school in August, but also to sustain that throughout the year. And so we're going to organize a committee around that. Jim Harriger really raised that concern from Victory Mission. And of course, he has a major back-to-school initiative from, held at Central Assembly in August of every year. And the one thing that was kind of surprising in the conversation was the huge need for clothing at this time. And a lot of it is coming out of a very, very warm summer. And then all of a sudden needing clothes to be warm, and they weren't ready for that. So that seems to be the issue driving that. But there still seems to be a nice, very nice response to, as far as our children and families are concerned and the community's response. So I want to make a public statement to thank all those agencies that helped us out with that. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. We do have a couple of speakers tonight who are providing public comments to address agenda items. I think you both have been here before, but let me remind you that you'll be given five minutes and that it's inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. Our first speaker is Sophia Yasen.
Good evening. I still have some issues.
Could you pull your microphone down, please, so we can hear you?
Regarding the separate facility on Farm Road 168. They said that they have a 23 percent integration rate at the one on college. And if I'm right, if that's like a class of 10 kids, there's one to three kids maybe in that class. It's still not the same as having them at their regular homeschool environment, especially if they have a sibling that, say, is in the kindergarten and one is in the early childhood program. It's still separation. You're still hauling them to a separate facility. And there's very little integration from what I've heard. And I haven't even seen any real data on the integration at the other childhood facility. I mean, if we pulled out all the Latino children and placed them in that facility on the Farm Road, people would be saying it was segregation. I don't see how it's any different with a special education child. And if there's no room hardly at the homeschools to provide special education for them at that facility, how do they have room to bring in regular students into the special education facility that's across town? That also doesn't make too much sense to me. In light of what's going on with Lebanon and their policy, I feel that this is heading down that same slippery slope. Because as these children's age, they get older, they come to the school and kindergarten, how are you going to have room there? Are you going to then propose a facility there? A separate facility then for them children as well? That's about all I have on that.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Vicki Kepling.
Good evening. I'll try not to be so nervous tonight. I'm Vicki Kepling. I was here two weeks ago about the same thing. I'm the mother of a special needs child, and I've been doing this for a long time. Anyway, so this week, I took the opportunity to contact the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I provided you with copies of part of the email that was sent back to me. And again, I'm here tonight to ask you to please vote no tonight on the creation of a second separate center for children with disabilities. I think our money needs to be placed within the neighborhood elementary schools and not in separate facilities. Okay, if you don't mind, I'm going to read this, okay? I was going to place it up there, but I was told that wasn't a good thing. Okay. This is from Shelley Woods, who is the Finance Coordinator of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Special Ed Department. She says, "Hi Vicki, and please let me reiterate that under state statute, ECSE costs are 100 percent reimbursable by state." That means wherever you spend this money, that it still comes from the state. Whether you do it within the schools or without, or out of the schools, it's still reimbursed from the state. I think there was some confusion that maybe that this could not be done in the neighborhood schools. And I'm confused by that. Okay, and "The statute indicates that the local school district shall be responsible to engage in a planning process to design the service delivery for children three and four years of age with disabilities. Furthermore, under federal statute, before a child with a disability can be placed outside of the regular educational environment, the full range of supple, with the full range of supplementary aids and services that could be provided to facilitate the child's placement in the regular classroom setting must be considered." And so what that means is each year, whenever you're a parent of a child with a disability, you meet for an IEP meeting and you discuss the different placements. And so you have to look at the possibility of placing this child in the regular setting. Now, I think there's some, you know, rewording or something to where K through 12, the wording's a little bit different. And I think maybe that's a loophole of some sort. But it's still not right. We, last year in January, the school district pulled out the majority of our preschoolers with disabilities and placed them into a separate setting on West College Street. And here it is one year later, and we're looking at doing a second one instead of putting that money in our schools, in our neighborhood elementary schools. Okay, following that consideration, if a determination is made that a particular child with a disability cannot be educated satisfactorily in the regular education environment, even with the provision of appropriate supplementary aids and services, that child could be placed in a setting other than the regular classroom. So what's that saying is that they have to show for each child that they cannot be given the education in the regular setting. Each IEP has to show this. Hence, the state does not have the ability to say services cannot be provided outside the regular classroom or within the different facility as long as the district proposes the inclusion of non-disabled peers at these facilities. And that's what we're doing. And I think that, yes, that is a good thing. Integration is a good thing, but it's still not the same as the neighborhood elementary schools. And has DESI agreed? This was some questions I asked. Has DESI agreed to the leasing proposal? And they said, "No, Springfield has not yet submitted a request." And I guess that's what you're going to be voting on this evening. Second, "Are you aware that your funding decisions are leading to separate schooling? Schooling away from the neighborhood elementary schools?" Her answer was, "The proposal on which to, on where to locate services is a decision made by the local school board. This is up to you. The district has an obligation to make free, appropriate public education available to all children with disabilities aged three to five in the least restrictive environment." So I just ask you to think maybe and look at, to look at spending the money in the local neighborhood elementary schools versus a separate center. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's move to information items, and we have the quarterly bond report.
Mr. Went.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Ritter. It is my pleasure to present an update on our 2009 bond projects. Starting with the air conditioning projects, and I'll just hit a summary of the report that was attached. These are the list of the remaining air conditioning projects that we have yet to close out. And let me just touch on them really quickly. The details are in the report. Boyd is essentially complete. We're just waiting on the final commissioning report. Phelps was one of the last ones that we had in construction. We're going to be starting our test and balance and commissioning coming up here the end of this month. Roundtree was, in essence, the construction phase was completed last summer, but there were some adjustments made. And so we've held out, closing out the project until we got into this heating season to make sure that the adjustments made were appropriate, and then we can close that out. Sunshine, the testing and balancing has started. And then TEFT is our final one. And the construction begins at the end of this month for that project. As we look at our construction projects, the Hillcrest project is still on track for completion in March 2013. This is actually a picture of the hyper facility. And this is on that, the corner towards the entrance of the football field. This is the location of where the elevator will go in. Here, I just had to throw this in. We ran into a little rock, surprise. And so one of those is a jackhammer, and the other's the backhoe clearing it out. Here's the new entryway for Hillcrest, and it looks very nice. There's another angle on it. As they continue the renovation in the auditorium, they're going to be sectioning off part of that entryway just for access to the auditorium. But we'll be opening up that entry for students here hopefully next week. The upper-left diagram shows the old cafeteria area where we were at the last quarterly report. And the lower-right picture shows now as they've been putting the drywall and filling everything in. That's coming along according to plan. This was the old kitchen area and has the, the plywood was actually outside where the new walls would be to give the contractors a sealed in space to work separate from the students. And now you can see where that, the new wall's in place. And now the metal studs are put in to separate those classroom areas. The auditorium was another piece of this project. So we can see in this picture, the auditorium seating had all been removed. And the old ceiling material, some was missing, some was stained. That's all been cleared off in, as they start putting in the new material. And it's going to really clean the auditorium up nicely. Some tuck pointing was also done on that auditorium because we did have some moisture penetration issues there as well. This is that connection to the new FEMA structure. The existing building on the right and the new FEMA structure there on the left. The new kitchen area, which is working nicely. Here, the upper-left picture is the, one of the food prep areas. And the lower-right is the, where the tray return and the new dishwasher. Oh, actually, it was the other dishwasher with some new stainless steel to configure it to this space. We look actually inside that FEMA structure. Now you can see the soffit's been completed across there and painted. And you can get a feel for the size of the space for the new cafeteria, which is working nicely. This picture I showed you last time, just showing the footprint of the building for it. And, I'm sorry, and this last photo for Hillcrest is from the north, looking back at the school. And you can see how it ties to the existing structure. So this project is moving along on schedule. As we look at Jeffries, Jeffries, the completion date has bumped a little. We had initially hoped to have this done in mid-November. The current schedule for completion is in December. We're monitoring that closely. Early on in the project, there had been some weather delay days which the contractor had put in for. Also, we've run into some unsuitable soils, which added some time. There's still some additional days the contractor's requesting, and the architect is evaluating at this point. The good news about this project is we don't have a specific time that we have to have it completed as far as for students, but obviously, the sooner the better. But as we look at the project here, you can see how the new entryway will come in through here with this canopy. The new administration area here is in front of the FEMA structure. This is another, the top-left picture is another of the administration area. And you can see how that canopy there is on the lower right. Inside the FEMA structure, the bottom-right picture, you can see the metal stud up in that mezzanine area. And that'll be used for some storage. The upper-left picture is actually just some tekton decking, which is put up in the ceiling of that structure to help with sound. As we look at our Westport project, Westport is moving along nicely on schedule. Still tracking for May of 2013. Here's the new middle school wing. You can see how the windows have been put in in the regular classrooms. We're waiting for those installed in the science rooms. Some of the mechanical equipment has already been set on the roof. Inside that new hall, you can see where the, where the areas where the concrete's been laid for all of the lockers, the pedestals have been put in place. This is the old library, which is now being converted to the elementary gymnasium. So the columns obviously needed to be removed and some new structure to support that. That's looking very nice. From outside the building to kind of get a feel, you can see, in the background is the old library, the new gymnasium. Now we have the new kitchen area coming on. And this area out in front here will be that commons area for it. So you can see how the whole front kind of comes to that curve as you come up from the park. And then again, the FEMA structure, which also incorporates the locker rooms. As we go to the technology, the technology Phase 1 training has been completed, 100 percent. Phase 2 training, they're at 94 percent, so almost completed. And all the smartboard and projectors have been installed. And with that, I thank you, and we'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Went. Mr. Ritter.
With the beginning of work at TEFT, is there a plan in place where the TEFT folks will be relocated? Or are they going to be in one place or scattered or?
We are looking at that currently. Initially, the plan was to do one floor at a time and work through while it is, while there is occupancy within the building. We've been working with Dr. Pomperine to look at some other alternatives to see if it's possible to relocate that staff. Makes it easier for the contractor, nicer for the staff. So we're evaluating that now, and I think there are some options that they're looking at.
I won't put you out on a limb, but in looking over the financials, it looks like we're in pretty good shape and even under budget on a couple of projects. Is your sense, are you fairly pleased so far?
Yes, I, yes, we are pleased with how our projects have come in. There are still a few variables. I mean, all the projects have been bid. The variables at this point are any outstanding change orders we might have and finalizing the FF and E orders. But we do anticipate with how things look now, pending changes, that we will probably be able to put roughly a million dollars towards the Westport project from the others.
Wow, you went far, and I thought you would on that.
Okay, let me back that up.
Yeah. Whoa, I didn't expect that one, okay.
Good, I was hoping for that one. Thank you, Mr. Went.
Was that planted? No.
No, good work.
That was good. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the parks. It's amazing what's going on with Westport and the cooperation with the parks. And you really can't tell the difference between the parks and the renovation that's going on with that, with their facility, their area, as well as with ours. It's a wonderful relationship, and I want to thank the parks for that.
Thanks. We have several action items for separate consideration. 7.01 is the adoption of the internal audit charter, which we were provided with last week. Any questions that we need to address on that to Mr. Mueller or Dr. Ritter? I would take a motion at the board to approve the internal charter as presented. So moved. Mr. Lee.
Second.
Mr. Renner. Good, thank you. And 7.02 is the adoption of the internal audit work plan for 2012, 2013. Again, we heard this last week. Any other questions on that? Need a motion that we approve the audit work plan for fiscal year 2013 as attached. Dr. Frederick.
Second.
Hi, Mrs. Callen. 7.03, are the transportation routes? Mr. Went, barely got to sit down.
The action item that you have before you is a requirement by state law that the board adopts the routes. So it's routine, we do this each year. I would like to point out that the Transportation Department is using 128 routes. This is the same figure we have used for the last two years. And I would just like to give special accommodation to Mr. Emling and his staff as they've continued to work our routes and to be as efficient as possible as we do it and to maintain that number of routes as our ridership has increased. The routes are attached, and Mr. Emling is here and can help answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Went or Mr. Emling? He's sitting back there somewhere. I saw him earlier. There he is. Looked right at you. I'll take a motion that the board approve the routes as developed. Mrs. Twitty.
Second.
Mr. Renner.
While we're waiting for that, I'd like to mention that I still have yet to hear a complaint about transportation. This has got to be a record in my career as a superintendent in three states. And so I don't know if Ann White or whoever it is is blocking them, but I haven't had a single complaint at all. So I want to congratulate Rick for that. I think he's got a great, great customer-focused system in place, so congratulations on that.
Thank you. And Rick, thank you.
Can't vote for Chris.
We can, we can go on. And you can record it as.
We can't hold for you.
Good, thank you. Mr. Chudus, go ahead.
Thank you. The board probably remembers during the budget development process for the current year's budget that we included $2 million for employer-paid medical insurance. This $2 million was allocated to the HBT. The calculation that was developed for the allocation to the HBT was to take the number of participants in the plan, divide it by the, divide that number into the $2 million and divide by 12 and come up with a increase to the monthly premium of $45. Due to notification requirements, the increase in the premium was not effective until the September payroll. Even though we had the $2 million budgeted, the July and August amounts are not going to hit because of that notification. And so what we're doing now is asking the board to approve a transfer of $310,320 from the operating funds into the Health Benefit Trust, which is the equivalent of what would have been paid out in July and August if we had implemented the increase at that time. Questions?
Questions for Mr. Chudus. Mr. Lee.
This came through the collective bargaining process? Okay, that's where.
I would take a motion that we approve the transfer of $310,320 from operating funds to the Health Benefit Trust.
So moved.
Mrs. Callen.
Second.
Mr. Lee. And we'll anxiously wait the Treasures Report.
Okay, thank you. Well, if you look at the second page of your attachment, you'll see the financial see the financial statement for September. We're still early in the year. The big numbers have yet to hit, but things are looking good. Total revenue as a percentage of budget compared to last year as a percentage of actual is up and total expenditures are down. Always, always good numbers. The total employee costs, tracking right in line with what they have, what they were at last year. And the good news is, you know, property taxes and sales taxes are up. I wouldn't get too excited about property taxes yet. The big numbers, as I mentioned, have yet to hit, but they will be coming up shortly. I'd be glad to answer any questions the board might have.
A little update on the state revenue picture. You're seeing some positive indicators.
We are seeing some positive information from the state every month. Seems to be some good news, not overwhelmingly good news, but we'll take anything we can get at this time.
Any other questions for Mr. Chudus?
I think locally, sales tax has been flat to down the last couple of months. Am I correct, my belief? Is that...
I don't follow local sales tax. And I know that's where the city gets their funding from. Our sales tax is statewide, allocated based on students, number of students. And I do plan on giving the board an update on the current year revenue at the board retreat.
Great. Thank you. Take a motion to approve the treasures report as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Lee?
Second.
And Mrs. Twitty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Sorry, was that Mrs. Twitty?
Mrs. Twitty. It's wonderful how we've mastered the electronic voting now and it works well and makes Mrs. Luton's life easy. We have several routine action items to approve. They're listed on board docs and they consist of minutes, personnel, and some contracts. I'll take a motion to approve those as submitted.
So moved.
Mrs. Callen?
Second.
The general consent items are listed on your agenda on board docs and we can approve each recommendation as submitted on the general consent agenda.
So moved.
Mrs. Callen?
Second.
Information items we discussed at the last, at the study session and we just voted on, they're listed on your agenda. We have public comments to address non-agenda items. These will be limited to three minutes and each speaker will be timed. Again, it's inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members. In an open meeting, if you have concerns about these, you can address them through the appropriate administrative staff. Alan Kemper is our first speaker.
Thank you, members of the school board. I don't have any polished things to say other than just simply to say, I do pray that we will take seriously keeping our true heritage alive this school year. I'd like to begin with what George Washington said. This was what was in his prayer journal. People say that he was just a deist. Listen to these words. Tell me if you think this man thought God just plagued dice with the universe or left it alone for a while. He said this, "O eternal and everlasting God, increase my faith in the sweet promises of the gospel. Give me repentance from dead works. Pardon my wanderings and direct my thoughts unto thyself, the God of my salvation. Teach me how to live in thy fear, labor in thy service, and ever be in the ways of your commandments. Make me always watchful over my heart, that whether the terrors of conscience, the loathing of holy duties, the love of sin, nor an unwillingness to depart this life may cast me into a spiritual slumber, but daily frame me more and more into the likeness of thy Son, Jesus Christ. That living in thy fear and dying in thy favor, I may in thy appointed time attain the resurrection of the just unto eternal life. Bless my family, friends, and kindred." George Washington. This was when he was a young man. Later, as he became president, he said this, "Let us unite therefore in imploring the supreme ruler of nations to spread his holy protection over these United States, to turn the machinations", I didn't say imaginations, I said the machination, the machinery of the wicked to the confirming of our constitutions." George Washington said that. I'd like to close a quote by C.S. Lewis, "If Christianity is of no consequence, it matters nothing. But if it is of consequence, it matters everything." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Mundy.
Dr. Ritter, I see you're getting right around the edges too. I guess you've earned yours also. I see. The Supreme, the Supreme Court has ruled, and we've talked about this before, that we have a right to the Christmas songs of tradition. Oh, Holy Night, Silent Night, the Hallelujah Chorus, and the First Noel are totally legal. Teachers, superintendents, they're totally legal according to the Supreme Court ruling. Now, if that be true, I don't want to hear that we don't want to offend so-and-so. This is our heritage, our Christian traditions, and we want those sang in our public schools. Ronald Reagan, "To preserve our blessed land, we must look to God. It is time to realize that we need God more than he needs us. Let us, young and old, join together, as did the first Continental Congress, in the first step," I'm sorry about that, "in humble heartfelt prayer." I'm not very mechanical about taking care of those things. "Let us do so for the love of God and his great goodness, in search of his guidance and the grace of repentance," nice word, repentance, don't hear it in too many churches anymore, "in seeking his blessings, his peace, and the resting of his kind, and help hands on ourselves, our nation, our friends, in the defense of freedom and all mankind now and always. The time has come to turn to God and reassert our trust in him for the healing of America. Our country is in need and ready for a spiritual renewal today. We utter no prayer more fervently than the ancient prayer for peace on earth." Ronald Reagan, according to Ms. Nadine Strossen of the American Civil Liberties Union, any documented quote by a great American, our founding fathers. We have a right, we have an obligation to share these quotes. I don't want those hid anymore from our students. May we put the Ten Commandments back on and turn back to the God of Abraham. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you. Don't believe there are any other public comments. Let's talk about legislative issues and legislative report. I know we have a reception tentatively scheduled.
Right. Scheduled for the Tuesday, the 29th. I think it's timely for us to do it at that time because we're not sure about number of the elections. Also, I, we feel that there's going to be probably some precedent sent based on the election in November. So we need to kind of wait and see. We will have an opportunity as far as legislative priorities for the school board. We will have an opportunity to look at and develop those priorities. If I may take advantage of it right now, you have in front of you our last, our last priorities for last year. And of course, we'll be making some suggestions, changes based on what's current now. And so we'll come into probably a study session in November, which would be, I believe, the 13th. And then the following week, just before Thanksgiving, we will have, come in with recommendations based on the conversation we have as a board on legislative priorities. And then we'll take that to the legislators that represent this area on the 29th. So if everybody's okay with it, that's what we'll do. If there's anything that you would like to have me focus on at this time, let me know. You know, the, there's a number of ballot initiative, I mean, there's a lot of ballot initiatives. There's a number of ballot initiatives that I think are going to help us as far as shaping some language there as well. So we need to wait to see. But anyway, you have those and that's the plan we have in place for that. Legislatively, other than vote in November, that's about all we have.
Good. Future issues, just a reminder that we do have a board retreat. Thursday, we're going to, and it'll be, the public notice will be given tomorrow, have a special meeting to discuss real estate at 4:30 and then we'll adjourn that and go to our, to our board
That'll be over at, that'll be over at the, Warner's Wildlife...
The Wolf Program is...
Wolf Program area.
That's where the retreat is?
Yes.
Well, thanks for telling me, Kathy.
We told you 10,000 times.
Everybody else, everybody else know?
Let her read your stuff.
We figured it out and we got to tell you, Senator. But anyway, we purposely wanted you to come here and then, yeah.
No, you, we don't allow late start because there's a ballgame to follow, so...
Lot, a lot of things to talk through, strategic plan, policy, board policies will be the first thing on the agenda, then strategic plan, and also some special initiatives that need to be discussed as well. So it'll, we'll need the full time to do that. So, another future issue, if I may, the, I just have to say this personally, this Friday is Pink Friday. And I don't know if anybody has the opportunity, but if you could wear pink, it'd be nice. I mean, it is interesting to see football players, baseball players wearing pink. And if, and if you have a chance to see the special video that the Kickapoo Kids put on, you know, the, I hope they win, I hope they win the $10,000 on that. But anyway, I just want to highlight that for everybody. Yeah, it's really neat. So, by the way, one other thing for future issues, I do think we have a couple football teams that are looking very, very promising as far as playoffs are concerned. So, and, and one of them's very surprising to be there considering where they were a year ago. And that was Parkview. So, anyway, that's it for future issues.
Great. Any other future issues? Okay, thank you. Any other issues the board needs to discuss?
I'd like to give the board an opportunity. I know, and Mr. Hosmer's been there, but at Roundtree, there's, the art teacher from Glendale came over and did a collage and it's beautiful, giving the history of the United States and special landmarks. And then on the other wall, and this is opposite the office, all the landmarks from Springfield. And what's interesting is the children recognize the national, but they don't recognize the Springfield landmarks. And so they're using that to learn that. And I wonder if Mr. Hosmer recognizes the Springfield landmarks. Do you...
Would I recognize them?
Yeah, would you recognize them?
He is a landmark.
I, I heard that, yes. That's the character. I was wondering.
Will it, will it, we need to invite Mr. Mundy to go by there, but he stepped out, so...
But anyway, it's really neat. It's really done well. Something to look at.
Great, thank you. Your financial operations report is included for your review. And I would take a motion to go into executive session to discuss student discipline issue hearing as exhibited in Section 16021, six, no five, RSMO.
So moved.
Mrs. Callen and Dr. Frederick.
And I will not be there, so...
Great. And thank you all very much.